I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
That will be after the public hearing.
It will be?
Yes.
Okay, just go ahead and be seated.
It takes me an honor, son.
We've got 15 minutes right now for budget regarding 2021. Sure, do we introduce this now?
Well, introduce it as the public hearing and call for the public comment.
Okay. Do you have any comments? Eric?
Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you all. Eric Wallace, partner with Baker Tilly. I know you have 15 minutes for the public hearing, so I'll be somewhat informal. If you have questions or you see public maybe raises their hands as I'm going through this, I don't want to take their time if there's specific questions, but I'm happy to give you guys an overview if you'd like me to.
Please.
I'll try to be brief, and again, interrupt me if you see questions or you all have questions. But I think you all have in front of you a report dated August 24th from our firm. It's a seven-page summary document. I know you also have the Form 1s in front of you as well, but I want to go to this document because this is really the quickest way to kind of go through the budget.
Talking this one, right?
Yes.
Always, okay. Thank you.
I agree, too.
As you're kind of finding that that seven-page report, the reason we do this is Susan has the probably 70 or 80-page full-budget report. You all have the Form 1s, which are probably 20-some pages. The Form 1s are the actual line-by-line budgets. There's many other forms that go into the state prescribed budget process. What we try to do is really boil it down to a nice, simple cash flow for the council. So you can say, okay, if we adopt this budget as is, based on the revenues we estimate that we're going to raise in 2021 from either taxes or other fees throughout the city, what will our cash flow be? If you have a specific question about, okay, what are we spending, general fund money on X, Y, Z, that's all in your Form 1s. That detail ties right back to the summary. Does that make sense to everyone? So I want to go through page two. If you'll turn to your page's landscape there, you'll see across the top several funds of the city, primarily general, obviously, is your largest fund that you spend most of your operations citywide from. And general's in the left-hand column. The top half of the page, there's receipts. The middle half of the page are dispersments. And then the green line, if yours is in color, if it's not, it's a shaded line, about three or four lines from the bottom, that's your cash flow, okay? So I'm going to go through the general fund specifically, and then we'll kind of, the other ones kind of fall into place. If you look at the top line on your general fund, about $3.3 million is the tax revenue from property taxes we anticipate. But keep in mind, in Indiana, we have this thing called tax caps or circuit breaker. Peru, like many communities, shares in that reduction in revenue that you see. That's when people get a tax bill, but they're already at their tax cap, so they get a credit and they don't pay the full tax bill, okay? Every community in Indiana has this issue. You guys lose about 28% on the dollar to tax caps. So about 28% of your revenue, the state says you'll get from property taxes as a gross number, once you net out those credits, you're really only getting about 72% of that revenue. And that's why we show that negative number. So in the general fund alone, you don't realize about $940,000 in property taxes, okay? So we come down to the net number of about 2.3, a little over 2.3 million in property tax. The next line down, local income tax, that's your other big tax revenue in your general fund. That's obviously income taxes that people who live in Miami County and the city of Peru pay and then get redistributed back to the units. That's actually a lower number than you've seen in the past. Last year, or when I say last year, I mean this year, but we're talking next year's budget. So the current year, 2020, you're set to receive a little under $1.4 million in income taxes in your general fund. You'll see the number that I'm showing there is a little over $1.2 million. That drop is because income taxes in Indiana are paid a year in arrears. So what are we seeing right now? COVID impacts, people being furloughed, laid off, et cetera. You'll see the brunt of that next year based on the income taxes people are paying this year. Does that make sense? So that's an estimate of a reduction due to the COVID-19 impacts that you're seeing now. You're going to feel that pain, if you will, next year.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So the drop in when Square D shut down, is that part of this or is that the current year?
So you would see, Square D, you'd probably see two issues. One would be property taxes. You had to give property taxes also on personal property, which would be equipment that wasn't abated, et cetera. And I'm not sure exactly when they shut down.
Last day was March of this year? Was that, is that current? Do you say by now?
Real close.
So you wouldn't have seen that reduction in property tax this year. You're going to see that, actually, March is the deadline. So you're probably going to see it next year, if not 2022. Income tax-wise, you would have started to see that or will start to see that next year because the people that lost their jobs for a load or moved away for a different job, those income taxes that are being collected now or not being collected will hit you next year in the distributions. Any other question?
So this is an estimate for the future, the 1,200?
Yes. And that's taking into account one of your largest employers and it's taking into account COVID. Now, we don't have a crystal ball. We're kind of using some state averages here, what we're seeing in other communities, what we're hearing unemployment-wise, et cetera. But I would definitely say you're going to see a reduction. Now, the state is trying to offset that, and I don't want to take up all of your time here, but we could go many different directions. The state's trying to offset that a little bit by, they're going to actually distribute 14 months of income taxes next year instead of a normal 12. There's 12 months in a calendar year because they realize the collections this year are going to be low. So they're actually going to distribute two extra months next year to try to offset some of that. Your wheels are probably turning already. Well, someday in the future, then, we got to make up those two extra months that they just, so you're going to have a future year where you maybe only get 11 months or 10 months. They're hoping that the economy recovers, and then a few years in the future, when they only give out that 11 or that 10-month distribution, you won't see much reduction. But they know there's going to be an issue in 2021, and they're trying to offset that some by giving some additional distributions. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
We still think you're going to see a reduction regardless, and that's what we're showing here. You have several other revenue sources. I'm not going to, some of these are state distributions that you get. Some of these are locally instituted fines, fees, et cetera. Overall, though, in the middle of the page, total operating receipts to general fund, again, your largest fund of the city, about $5.7 million is what we estimate. Your budget, then, is under operating dispersments, and I've summarized this by personal services, supplies, services and charges, and capital outlays. Those four coatings are what the state uses. Your Form 1s that you have in front of you have all those different line items match up to that. You'd see each one falls in one of those categories. If you'd add up those couple hundred lines of data that you have in front of you, you'd come to a budget in your general fund of $6,26,000 or $28,000, excuse me. That compares to last year's budget, that was a little less than 6.3 million. So you've actually reduced your general fund budget a little bit from last year, but still, because of the reductions in revenues we're anticipating, we think that you're going to anticipate, if you spend your whole budget, about a $300,000 shortfall in 2021. Do you guys see that in the highlighted line? That's your cash flow. Again, you've reduced your budget from last year if you adopt this budget, but you're seeing some revenue shortfalls that I think are going to pinch you a little bit, that you're going to have to, in essence, dip into your savings account about $300,000 if you spend every dollar that's budgeted, okay? Historically, you haven't spent, most places don't spend every single dollar that's budgeted. You probably spend 95% to 98%. So we have to plan for worst-case scenarios if you spend everything that you approve in this budget. Does that make sense to everyone as we work across? What I would focus on, again, and I know we don't have that much time, but that highlighted green line shows you the cash flow fund-to-fund. The general obviously has an issue due to the revenue. The other fund that I think sticks out quite a bit is motor vehicle highway, the next column. That's where you pay for not only some street department salaries, wages, personnel costs, but you pay for a lot of your paving out of there. That is the one budget out of all of these two pages that actually increased materially from last year. Last year's budget in motor vehicle highway was about $830,000. This year's budget is just over $1.1 million. That whole approximately $300,000 increase is really paving-related budget. This year and somewhat last year, you paid for a lot of your paving out of a bond issue that was done. Now, you've spent that bond issue on paving and other projects. Now, you're going to have to start paying for any other paving you want to do out of your normal revenues, et cetera. So there's $300,000 out of NVH earmarked for paving next year. Now, we're anticipating you'll go for a community crossings grant match. So you take that $300,000, leverage it with the state, and get a $300,000 match and do $600,000 of paving is the plan. But you still have to come up with your $300,000 of local match. Does that make sense? And we're taking that from the NVH fund.
So can you tell me the difference between on public safety last year and this year, please?
Last year, the public safety fund, which is the far right, because keep in mind, you paid for some public safety out of other funds, too. Just the public safety fund itself, your budget this year is $828,000. I believe last year's budget was $766,000. So about a $60,000 increase.
Okay. I like that. I mean, you weren't actually more, right?
Yes. And I didn't go line-by-line. Susan obviously puts together what the department heads, the line-by-line budgets. I'm assuming some of that is additional salary personnel costs. I think we have some police vehicles budgeted in there, et cetera.
Yeah, we got one vehicle out, but they do have one in there yet.
To go back to the paving, I know when we met that you suggested maybe taking that $300,000 number down to 185,000. Did you just find that you just had too many projects, Miles, that you wanted to take care of and you wanted to keep it at 300,000? Or why didn't we move that towards 185,000?
We've got some other projects coming up, the paving projects, to where if we keep that 300 in there, otherwise, we're going to end up with some of the side streets and stuff looking like West Main did, which they're working on now, so.
Can I elaborate on, sorry if I use first names, to Betsy?
Yeah, that's fine.
To Betsy's comment, where she's referencing the 185,000, that's because in your NVH fund, you get gas tax money from the state of Indiana, and they require you to restrict 50% of that revenue for only paving-related projects. So the 185,000 comes from the state. You're actually getting about $360,000, $370,000 next year in gas tax money. Half of that has to go to paving anyway. So the comment Betsy's making is because you can't use that money for anything else. So at a minimum, you would be going for $180,000, leveraging that for a $360,000 community crossings grant. But there's additional paving that's baked into this as well, so that's why it's not 180, it's 300,000 here.
So half of this we cannot use for?
Salaries, wages, et cetera.
Can use for police and fire.
You have to restrict it from paving.
And that's only the gas tax?
It's only the gas tax. And to give you an idea, again, COVID impacts to that. In 2020, you got $460,000 in gas taxes from the state. Right now, the state estimate, as I said, for next year is only 376,000. So you're seeing almost a $100,000 drop estimated. Now, we don't, gas taxes actually distributed about two months in arrears, so that's more of an up-to-date number. Who knows if we're going to get back to normal travel, people back to work, et cetera, next year, but we're anticipating about a $100,000 reduction in your revenues there as well.
Thank you.
Page three does the additional for other funds, including fire, territory, cumulative capital development, et cetera, your economic development income tax fund. I'm happy to go through any of these in detail, but I know in your amount of time you had, I kind of wanted to skip forward to kind of a graphical representation that I think will give the council a very good idea. And I'm happy to stay for your regular meeting if there's additional questions in, et cetera, as well. But if you'll go to page four, I want to show you what does this budget really mean to us in a very easy, understandable way. So page four, I've picked your eight largest funds of the city, okay? And you'll see there's four on each page, on pages four and five. These eight funds represent 91% of your budget. So these eight funds really drive the entire city. We're not talking utilities, we're only talking city operations. If I assume the revenue reductions we're anticipating seeing from COVID, things like Square D, and I assume you spend every single dollar that you budget in these eight funds, this shows you, these kind of odometers show you where your ending cash reserves will be December 31st of 2021. Does that make sense? So at the end of next year. If you're in kind of the light shaded area, that's between a 15% and 50% operating balance. That's pretty good. You're doing decent there. If you're in the darker shaded to the right, that's excellent. That means you have an over 50% operating balance. That means you could go a whole half a year without getting another dollar in that fund, and you'd still be solvent, okay? If you're to the left in the darker area, it's red in a color, you can see the color here, but if you're in the left to the red, that's a red flag of, okay, we're below what Baker Tilly and the state is telling us is really kind of a minimum reserve. What you'll notice is your general fund is in the acceptable range. Now, we're a little bit on the lower side of the acceptable range, we're going to keep an eye on it, but you're still in the acceptable range. Your NVH is going to be in the red. That's a red flag one that we really need to start building up NVH after this year. Now, half the money's restricted that you get from the state, so how are we going to do that? We're going to have to rely on some other funds or some cost reductions in future years beyond just paving. Park, you're in the acceptable range. Aviation, you're in the acceptable range. And then on page five, public safety, let's seat it, cumulative capital development and fire, all are actually in the green, in the very good range. You're above 50% in all of those, okay? So this is just a really quick way, as a council, to look and say, okay, do we have any funds we need to make? Because certain funds, you can only spend on certain money. You made the point of public safety, what can NVH be? There's restrictions in some of your funds. You can't spend NVH money on public safety even if you wanted to. You can't spend local roads and streets money on salaries and wages. It has to go towards capital investment. So there's restrictions to some of these funds. And what you're seeing here is NVH is a red flag. We need to really focus on that going forward. Everything else is in pretty good shape, but page five shows you the four funds that are in really good shape that we may need to rely on in future years to do some other capital investment, pay for if we have to have additional vehicles purchased, et cetera, because these have very good flexibility. Like your SEEDIT fund and your CCD fund, those two on page five, you can spend those on anything.
We can spend those on fire and police?
You can spend SEEDIT and CCD on any legal purpose of the city, so it's basically the same as your general fund.
It's not renewable, right?
Say it again?
It's not renewable?
Renewable.
If you use it all, it doesn't come back?
Yeah, if you spend this all the way down to zero, just think of it as your own personal checkbook. The only way you get it to come back is you got to spend less in a future year.
So you wouldn't do this for, if I remember correctly, we wouldn't use this for like two years.
Which fund specifically are you talking about?
SEEDIT for capital, cumulative capital.
You could.
But it's not a good idea, right?
Yeah, it needs to be sustainable. So what I've seen communities do is as you're getting more pressure, here's a perfect example of something, I'm not saying we want to study this and get more feedback, but here's an example of something that gets considered. NVH pays for some of your street salaries and wages. NVH has a lot of pressure. You could move one or two street employees out of NVH, that cost, and move it to CCD or SEEDIT, because that's an acceptable expenditure of those funds. That would take pressure off your NVH fund and put it where you have the money in SEEDIT or CCD. But to your point, is that sustainable? If we move $100,000 of cost, can we sustain that two, three, four, five, six years out? Or are we just moving the problem from NVH to another fund? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Sustainability, that's the reason I focus on cash flows. Your budget can be approved today, right as it is, no issue, but you're seeing like NVH, you're going to have some sustainability issues in future years you need to solve down the line.
So I'm a little bit concerned. So on the fire department, this fire can, so right now, they're proposed to only get a 2% raise?
What is the fire rate? I can't remember. Yep.
So with the fire department or fire account being in such a good position, do we have room to increase that?
So let me take you back to page three and show you the cash flow. On page three, the column, the third one from the right, you'll see it's labeled fire territory.
Right.
Everybody see that? So this is your fire operating fund. If you go down to the cash flow line, so the highlighted line towards the bottom, you see it's a negative $11,000 approximately. So if you spend every dollar that's budgeted in fire, based on our revenue estimates, we anticipate you'll reduce your cash by $11,000, so you'll dip into your savings account. The line below that, your fire, and this is estimated what you'll have at the end of this year, so it's not currently today, this is at the end of 2020, you have about a little over $700,000 in that fund. So yes, if you wanted to give more money to firefighters or buy more equipment, et cetera, you could do it, but you're going to be taking it out of your cash reserves. You don't have cash flow to support it on an annual basis, if that makes sense.
So when it runs out, they are fired? Or they don't get the raise? It ends?
Yeah, it's not, I mean, that's a small cash flow, but yes, it's unsustainable. I think NVH is a better example. You can't have another year of NVH at negative $400,000 cash flow or you're out of money. Fire, you can't do that in perpetuity of having native cash flows or you're out of money at some point. Sustainability is very much key.
I wanted to ask you about strategic planning. I know you mentioned that when we met as a group, and you recommended that. And I can think of two areas that I think it would be great if we had a strategic plan, especially since you're anticipating maybe COVID's going to carry over to next year's budget as well. The park budget and also the aviation budget. I don't know how we go about it, but I would like to see some kind of strategic plan put in place where those two things could self-support or come closer to self-supporting. Because right now, we're paying $100,000, close to that in tax dollars, to support the golf course, you know, and the same thing for the airport. And these are great things that we have, but only a small amount of people are using them, and we're paying all this money out. And I think we need to figure out a way that maybe they could self-support or come closer to funding themselves.
Sure. In a strategic plan or a comprehensive plan, really has a number of parts, but I'll boil it down to kind of what you're hitting on. Communities, we do this for communities all over the state of Indiana, we usually look out a minimum of three years, up to five, six, seven years out, because we want to focus on a couple of things. Sustainability, as I've already hit on, and capital needs, because what really changes from year to year dramatically you see in your NVH fund, it's capital. How much paving are we going to do? What vehicles do we want to buy? Do we want a new fire truck that's going to cost us $700,000? Well, we better plan for that before the year it's ready to be bought, because that's a significant investment. You start with a capital plan of multiple years. You overlay operational costs, you know, you may want to hire more police officers, firefighters down the line, et cetera. And you start to see, okay, where are we going to have pinch points in 2022, 2023, 2024? And what levers do we have to solve that? You don't have a lot, to be honest with you, because property taxes are what they are. You don't really control it. Income taxes, the county controls, you don't really control it. So your third level, as Betsy hit on, is what's our local revenue streams? Are we charging, and I'm not condoning, you don't tell there's a, are we charging enough for golf? Are we charging enough for building permits? Are we self-supporting where we can self-support? Because what the state did when they instituted circuit breaker, as I alluded to very early, that's taking away, remember, almost a million dollars just in one fund from you, property taxes that you would have gotten 10 years ago previously. The real intent was to make local funding kind of a third, a third, a third. A third property tax, a third income tax, and a third locally-generated revenues, if you will. And I think that's one thing I would focus on if I was you, of where can we monetize some things that we do in the community?
Eric, we had a five-year plan, which we've come to the end of, and we need to set up another five-year plan, at least five years. That's one thing we need to discuss, too.
And that's what kind of Betsy's alluding to as well, Tom, is we did one, a full-blown one in 2016-ish.
Yes.
And we're kind of at the end of that. We started to update it last year, obviously. There's new members of council, new administration. I agree, or I would say that's probably something you all want to dust off and kind of work mayor, clerk treasurer, council.
Right.
And start saying, okay, from, you know, 21's budget, we're already talking about, what are we going to do from 2022 to 2027?
Correct.
What cap, and again, I'm going to come back to, because you think this sounds simple, probably, but think of all your departments, all the rolling stock you have, all the road miles you had to pave, all the parks that you have that you want to do improvements to, that all takes money. And not everybody can do everything in the same year, because you don't have the money. You have to spread that out and say, okay, we're going to do this in '22, we're going to do this in '23, we're going to do this in '24. We're going to raise some revenues by doing X, Y, Z. It's really bringing that all together into a five-year plan.
Where's the Civic Center fall under? Is it parks or what is that?
Its own self.
I beg your pardon?
It's its own self.
Yeah.
It has its own budget.
Its own item.
Yeah, and I don't, I didn't include it, I don't think, in the summary, because it is a pretty small, yeah, it's in your detail, but I didn't include it in this one.
There's no director salary listed.
We're going to do away with the full-time director and go to more of an event coordinator because we're losing a ton of money, a ton of money on the Civic Center. We're trying to figure out how to save it.
Yeah, we need to find some way to save it.
Yeah, because some of these play, okay. All right.
And that's, you know, and I don't know all the background locally of the Civic Center, that's part of a strategic multi-year plan of if you have, I see this in civic centers or memorial homes or, you know, I've been involved in a lot of these discussions in communities, that's going to take resources to keep that thing going. Where are we going to find those resources from? You need to kind of have a strategic multi-year discussion of how are we going to keep that alive, how are we going to keep it going, how are we going to fund it?
I hate to see that go.
The last page I wanted you to see, and this is really not for anything other than, I think it's interesting, especially at the council level where you're making decisions, is page six. Again, this is not meant to make any decisions for you. I think this is just something that, as a council member, probably gives you some eye-opening, if you will. Again, two of your three largest revenue sources, really your two largest are income tax and property tax. If you look at the far right of this chart, or the bottom-right circle, if you will, that's where you're spending your income tax and your property tax money. And I, we do it real general, just to give you kind of a broad strokes idea, but about 44% of every income tax and property tax dollar you bring in goes to public safety. About 35% goes to city operations, that's things, you know, like city overhead, just day-to-day operations, that's most of the employees that aren't specific to like a park or specific to the police or fire. 9% goes to streets, 4% to park, and about another 9% to economic development. This is not uncommon to what I see in most communities. You see usually in that 40% to 50% range, public safety, you see a pretty big chunk to kind of operations of the city, and then you see these smaller sprinkled-in amounts for streets, parks, et cetera. I bring this to your attention, not to change anything you do, but to give you another piece to the pie of, you know, if we're really focused on parks, are we spending our money in the park system? And the circle gives you the intent that this is, you know, this is a closed loop. If you want to spend more on parks, you're taking it from somewhere else, right, to do so. So it just gives you an idea of how that all fits together.
So bottom line to Tom's point, some of this boils down to a strategic plan and city priorities, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
So do we meet with you or how does that work?
I beg your pardon?
How does that work? Does it get set up?
Yeah, we've done, we've done, we call them comprehensive plans, strategic plans, whatever you want. We've done them in the past, as I said. I'm happy to sit down with, with, you know, the administration, any members of the council, and kind of go through what it looked like before and how it gets built. And then really, it comes back to your department heads have to be heavily involved, council has to be heavily involved, mayor, clerk treasurer, and then we really pull it all together, kind of financially, into the document that says, okay, if you want to do all this, this is your best way forward.
You really helped us the last one.
But it, I do want you, it does fall, I mean, I can't tell you when to buy a police crew. I mean, your department heads, mayor, have to be involved of, this is our replacement plan, these are the roads we want to pave, and then I pull all that information together to give you guys something to kind of make decisions upon.
There's strategic plan, you can have a city council strategic plan, you can have a mayor's, you know, city administration strategic plan. You can, you know, do it all kinds of ways, but it's just, you know, if the city council has a, has priorities and the mayor has priorities, hopefully, we can work together, correct, mayor?
Yeah.
With, you know, creating something that.
We have to.
Can support. Yeah, well.
That's the only way to work.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's part of the text I, well, anyway.
So the issue I'm asking about is, we can't all meet together unless it's being advertised. So it would have to be separate to not have a whole meeting, end of emergency meeting, or whatever we would call.
Executive.
Executive session.
Executive session.
The one other thing I was going to ask about the budget is it says the, the police car says $46,000 on the budget, and the spreadsheet says $48,000. And I just wanted to know, is Danny, did Danny go, why we're getting another police car? We just got two explorers. So I just wanted to know kind of what the need was there, but he can call me with that and have to tell me right now.
You have to have one in each fund to be able to qualify for the grant.
So this is for the explorer?
So we have, we have to leave those one in each fund so that they can get the USDA, USDA grant like they did this year. We take.
She could budgeting that same thing for next year.
Right.
Okay. And do you know if it's 48 or 46?
I think they're expecting it to be a little more, because, you know, cars go up.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what he asked for.
On this, it says 46. This one, it says 46, and on this one, it says 48.
Yeah, it's because the USDA grant pays more.
Okay, that's what she said. Thank you. She didn't.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Eric, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Very much so.
I know I took more time, there was a lot, do I need to stick around for your regular meeting? Is there any other questions you guys have?
I have a lot of questions, but.
Do we have any questions from the folks out here? Speak now.
I'm happy to follow up with the mayor and Susan regarding the strategic plan and then pass some information on to you as well, about how that would work. Is that what you have an idea?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll close the meeting regarding the 2021 budget.
It'll be a vote to close a public hearing.
Okay. Need a vote, Tom?
Close the public hearing.
To close the public hearing.
We're still going to talk about the budget in the city council meeting, correct?
Just the budget.
Okay.
Just budget meeting.
Right, the budget hasn't been actually presented.
Okay.
I make a motion to close the public hearing on the budget.
Second.
Okay. So I move we close this open meeting?
Yes, sir.
I move we close the open meeting?
I second that, good.
Roll call.
Anderson's not here. Guston?
Yes.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yeah.
Saad Ashini?
Yes.
Wolf? Yes.
Okay, it's now 6:32. We'll continue, and I will call the regular meeting for September, City of Peru Common Council to order. And if everybody would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Pete. Also, remain standing for the invitation that's going to be given by Reverend Wedding.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy. We pray that you would bless this city council, give them wisdom and understanding as they make decisions for our city. Bless our mayor, our attorney, our, our treasurer, our secretary, all of those that work, God, to make this city a great place. Bless our fire department, our police department. Keep your hand upon them, protect them, give them wisdom in the situations they face. Let your favor be upon this town. Bless our school systems and our economy, and we give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we're open for the reading and correcting of journals of the minutes of the regular meeting.
Mayor? Roll call.
Roll call, Susan.
Anderson? Guston?
Here.
Clotho?
Here.
Ramsey?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Saad Ashini?
I'm here.
Wolf?
Here.
Okay, now, since we all have copies of the minutes, I don't see any reason that we need to have them read, so I move we suspend the rules and dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Second.
Roll call.
Guston?
Yes.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Here.
Saad Ashini?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Anyone?
I got a couple things. The Relay for Life is going to be from 6 until 9, that same day on the 26th of September. And it's going to be at McConacall Park. They're going to have lunch, dinner in a bag, so people cannot get out of the cars. And they're also going to have a, oh, a survival, again, the survival goody bag, but also some screen pictures from the last few years of this Relay for Life. They're going to have that for the people to look at, because I know the first couple of years was at Peru High School, and they're going to show some of those pictures that particular evening. Also, I was at the park board meeting last Thursday, and they do have a new clubhouse manager, Jeff Grant, who took over Baz the other day, and things are starting to get a whole lot better than there was.
What was the problem?
Baz wasn't doing what they were supposed to be doing, he was supposed to be doing, like cleaning the golf carts and things like that. Also, I found out some things about the Riverwalk. Some motor vehicles are starting to get on the Riverwalk, scooters, and also some bicyclers are not being a, not being considered to people as they walk by. They're saying different stuff that should not be, should not be said. So, and then also, some dogs are being unleashed as they walk them. Found that out today. I found out a lot of things today when I was walking, Betsy. So, but yeah, so we got two or three things that we need somewhat taken care of. That's all I got.
Mayor, did you want to say anything about the, the walkway extension to the trail? It's going to be started in October after the bats leave, and eventually, but before that, starting tomorrow, we're having an open ceremony down at the new YMCA, where they're starting construction down there.
She knows about the VA that we're going to tomorrow? VA tomorrow?
VA is tomorrow. Okay, I'm sorry. It is VA tomorrow. Then the following Tuesday, we'll be on the new YMCA. Right now, we can't do anything until after October the 1st because of the bats, migratory homes are down there along the river. So it will be, hopefully, with the weather holding off, hopefully, we can have it done by the end of the year, because it depends on when the blacktop plants close, when the winter moves in, and everything such as that. But they are going to be starting to clear and do the base of it after October the 1st. So depending on the weather, on whether or not they get it done this fall or by next spring, so, and that'll be a, a big asset, especially once we get the Y done and people be able to, it'll connect right into the Nickel Plate Trail from downtown here, so.
Okay, aviation board? I went to the aviation board meeting on August 11th and then on the 14th this month, or not the 14th, but last Tuesday. The open house on the 25th proceeds for $1,609, and it came from airplane rides and the food. Expenses were $719, so there was 890 left to split between the Surface City Festival, the Gerson Museum, and the 369 Museum. They expected to give around $296 to each one. And they speculated on next year's open house. They have been working on providing jet A fuel, and the tank has been checked out, is in good repair. There was a few minor things that they had to repair, and they will be ready to go very soon, and they're speculating on how much they're going to charge, and so far, it looks like they're going to be very competitive with other cities. We have a courtesy car that is available to the Peru airport out there, and it's for the pilots to go out to do or other needs. And for the traffic department, we wanted to give you a thank you, because they are going to help by painting the yellow lines on the roadway and taxiway, and they just wanted to make a special thank you to them. On another note, they are talking about possibly starting a fund to provide a scholarship to young aviators who are interested in becoming pilots. So they are working towards that. And that's all.
Do you have any other reports? My events? Okay. Okay, nothing else under that. Move on to unfinished business. Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. I have here a city resolution to establish rate tracking factor for the municipal electric utility for the city of Peru. Looks like it's going down. A little bit.
That's a good sign.
Hi, Josh.
How you doing? Lonely in the hallway. So in front of you is the tracker for the fourth quarter, and overall, it's a reduction of .000162 on average cents, on average, but for the residential, it will be per 1,000 kilowatts, about $4.45 reduction. On the commercial side, about $24.56 reduction. And this is, as we say every time, the tracker is just the pass-through for our wholesale costs, and those wholesale costs have gone down. There's a lot of energy in the market that people aren't using, because the businesses aren't as open as they were, so, good and bad, I guess, right? Businesses aren't open as much, but the price of power has gone down.
Thanks, Josh.
This time was easy, huh?
Yeah, good day.
Will we consider the rate tracker resolution?
I second. Who's second is?
Roll call.
Guston?
Yeah.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashini?
Yes.
And Wolf?
Yes.
I move we adopt the rate tracker resolution.
I second. We got a reduction, let's take it.
Guston?
Yes.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yeah.
Saad Ashini?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Think we have the form down there.
She's got it down there.
Okay, moving on, I need to adjust the agenda. What I have here from Peru Public Library needs a city council, president, funding on paperwork, declaration of the fiscal body, it's something that needs to be done every year for their expenditures and everything to be paid, and how they go about it.
Yeah, come on up, Mary Ann.
Tom, you want to move to amend the agenda? Add this to the agenda real quick?
I do, I move we amend the agenda to meet the mayor's request.
Second. Okay, and.
Roll call.
Wait, hold on a minute.
I just made roll call.
Guston?
Yes.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashini?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Sorry, we cut you off.
That's okay. You know what, librarians, we're not known for public speaking anyway, so it's quite okay. This paperwork is really just to declare our fiscal body. There have been several laws put in place recently by the legislature where libraries needed to know who that was, and there were several, actually, I'll say a lot, a lot lot, that did not know who their fiscal body was. Some have been declared when a library opened. Ours, for instance, was declared because we are a city of Peru library, but as different townships and things have gone into different libraries, they didn't know who their fiscal body was. So this is just declaring that you, the Peru City Council, is Peru Public Library's fiscal body. And it would matter, for instance, we came to you when we needed an Oprah grant, that was one of the things we did, or if we would go into binding review for our budget, then we would need your approval. So it's just basically declaring that you are our fiscal body.
So all we have to do is sign the form, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Will you, will you do that, mayor? Yes, I will. Thank you. I'm going to ask that you put that into a motion and take a roll call. I move we have the mayor declare the, I put this over out of the way.
The city council's fiscal body.
That the libraries are fiscal.
We're the fiscal body for the library.
Right, for the library. That's my motion.
I second it. Oh, Pete had already seconded.
Okay, I apologize.
Guston?
Yes.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Here.
Saad Ashini?
Yes.
Wolf? Yes.
Okay, moving right along next door to your business is a request by Brenda Weaver to place a statue of Marie Stuart Edwards on the grounds of the Peru Public Library.
When we have been doing our research, as you know, we've been celebrating this year as the 100-year anniversary of the women getting the right to vote. And when we did our research, Marie Edwards just floated to the top. And we want to honor her with a bronze statue. We applied for an Oprah grant. We had to file it through RDP, because that's the way you do it, like you're the fiscal body of that, they're the fiscal body of the Oprah grant. And we would like, we're getting $35,000 for a bronze statue. And our plan is, she is 12 years old, and she's with her bicycle, and she's going to the library. And there's no other place that statue needs to be, the library. So what we would like to ask all of you, if you would accept our gift of the statue and have it placed on the library property. What we plan to do it is their, their parking lot is like here, and there's a little hill that goes down to the sidewalk. It's to the right of their staircase, and it's a parking place for it. So what we would like to know is if you would accept our gift with, hopefully, the stipulation that it would be placed on the library property.
Thanks, Brenda. One, one thing I would like to address before you leave here, and I feel like in good conscience, I have to advise the board, the council. The library board took a vote on this last week and denied. The library board took a vote on this last week and denied placing it on library property. I guess what I'm saying is, I would like to see not us override that board, but the library and all the employees, everything, work with that board and get their approval before we agree to say we will place it. I mean, that would be like me trying to circumvent the city council on something that somebody else said, no, we were not going to do it.
Their concerns for maintenance and safety and that kind of stuff, we answered all of their questions. And I don't know why the three of them said no. If the one lady who wasn't there but was on the phone could have voted, it would have been 4-3. But she did not vote. So that's why we're in the pickle we're in. On this Thursday, we are receiving the grant. The lieutenant governor is going to be here. And I would have liked to have been able to tell her, this is where we are going to have Marie Edwards as a little girl. But as of right now, we are hung out there.
I would feel 100% comfortable overriding the library board on this. Marie Stuart, Marie Edwards, she was brilliant. She was incredible. For anybody who doesn't know her story, she was fantastic. She was from Lafayette. She ended up marrying a guy from here that had a furniture company. She really was a pioneer in the women's suffrage movement for the state of Indiana. And I think we're the only, one of the three counties that received this grant. And I think it's embarrassing to turn this gift down.
Yes. And as far as the, what was the thing on River Road?
Civic Center.
Civic Center. Marie was very much involved in redoing that at one point. She was, that was her favorite.
Right, she did so much for Peru.
We're going to have a suffrage trail eventually. We have a five-year plan.
She did incredible things. I mean, she, I mean, just to think that, if you think you're one person and you can't do something, look at her. She did so many things. She organized over 12,000 women to march in Marien with two days' notice. She raised $80,000, which was a ton of money back then for the women's rights movement. I think we have no choice other than to accept this gift and to put it on the library lawn. I think that we can find the funds. If they're concerned about maintenance, I think that we can find the funds to take care of the statue.
What's your take?
Come on up, Mary Ann. No. No, I am in total agreement with Miami County Work Remembering Grant and ACES Plus, who wrote this grant. I think it'd be an asset. I was shocked when it was turned down. I was a little heartbroken because we discovered that Marie Edwards, she was the first woman on the school board in 1919. And that meant she was also the first woman on the library board. Because the library board was run by the school system. So it even puts more emphasis on her being at the library.
Was that our library?
Yeah. She had all the meetings. She brought the movement to Peru. Because they said, we want you to come to Indiana. I said, I can't. I have this husband, I have this son I have to take care of. She had all these meetings in her home. She trained people. She had all these meetings in the library. It was incredible what she did. Incredible.
She led the Peru Franchise League upstairs and was now considered our adult library. And it's just amazing to think that she took that all the way to Washington from Peru. So I think she'd be an inspiration for all the little girls and women in our community.
I want to get a consensus from the council. I move we accept.
Wait, can I?
Go ahead.
Can I go ahead, please?
Go ahead.
But I'm going to back that, okay? I just, I've been doing some research today, Betsy, as we've talked about the funding. Do you mind if I share some of this?
Do it.
Okay, thank you. I talked with Connie Cutler. And if we can pull that money together, it would, I don't know how much the insurance is going to be, they would manage the fund to get it cleaned and insurance and maintain it. Thank you. Also, we just need to know personally, I'll pay for it. I would do that. But that's not, we don't need to. We have, we had a certain amount of money in our city council budget that's for education. There are some left over. That may be a possibility. I don't know if that's legal, that we could transfer that to them.
I just think in the future, as for even education, I think the statue is going to be something that communities from around us will be busting on their 4th grade Indiana students to talk about this amazing woman.
And we can't not put up statues just because we're afraid somebody might vandalize them. We can't not.
And we've really had very little. We do have a bell on the side of our building as well, as some top architectural figure, I don't know what it is. But we've had very little vandalism in the 24 years that I've been there. I think it may have been vandalized. One time, we had Atlas come and take care of it, and it was a nominal fee. It wasn't very much.
There's ways of doing this financially. I mean, no question.
I just think it's embarrassing on behalf of Miami County. We were one of the three counties chosen, and we can't accept it. I mean, come on. We can figure it out.
We didn't know that they moved the date up until this afternoon. It was supposed to be the 29th, and now it's this Thursday.
We will be out printing Rose Bushes tomorrow. So that is beautiful for the lieutenant governor.
I move we accept this statue.
I second it.
Roll call.
Justin?
Yes.
Cloto?
Absolutely, yes.
Ramsey? Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashani?
Yes.
Walt? Yes.
Tom, just a bit of an acknowledgement, not just accepting the statue, but on library property.
On library property, yes. Include that, Susan Lee.
Cool.
You guys have any questions? Our main researcher's right here if you have any. You're just fine. I'm just excited.
Thank you so much for coming, Brenda. Thanks for championing the cause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to say something?
If you would like to. This is Allison Paul. She is the board president of the library.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Allison.
I am the president of the Peru Public Library Board of Trustees. And as you can hear, I am a foreigner. I'm an immigrant citizen. I got my citizenship November 18th, 2011. It was a Friday in South Bend. And along with, I would say, about 40 people in this beautiful courtroom, he swore us all in. And we all got our picture taken with the judge. And it was a Friday. That following Monday, I went with my certificate to the courthouse. And I signed up for my right to vote. And I carry in my wallet to this day my registration for my right to vote. It's one of the most proud things I own. And it seems to me that this woman gave half the population of our country the right to vote. It's something we should be proud of, not just here, but everywhere. But she did it here, in our library, upstairs, under that stained glass window. She belongs on our lawn. And I am happy to hear that you are willing to understand that the library couldn't commit to the funding of repairs and maintenance and insurance. This, I think, was the sticking block for the three members who voted not to accept the gift to the library. So, thank you. I think this will be a wonderful thing. This happened here, in our library. Not in Indianapolis, but here. And when you think of how much we celebrate Cole Porter, this woman probably did more for this community than he ever did.
She lived here.
Yes, yeah, in the gray house. You know, it took 13 ballots for that woman to get to the school board. 13 ballots. But she did that. That made her one of the first women to be on the library board. And you and me, we are here because of what that woman did, that fight. People weren't given the right to vote. They had to fight for it. And if it hadn't been for that woman, the mother of that man in Tennessee in 1936, 1936, to ratify it, would we be here? Would you be here? Would I be here? I don't know. But his mother told him it was the right thing to do. And this is the right thing to do for this woman. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Allison?
Regine and Allison and your board, you guys do so much, like all boards do, without pay. And the volunteer, it's just thrilling to talk with so many people today in the past 24 hours, and Betsy. It's just been thrilling to hear so many people passionate about this. But yay.
Really appreciate, again, expressed to you. In the past year, I feel kind of funny because I almost dismissed this woman. I just, she lived in the gray house, so she lived in the gray house. I didn't realize until I studied what an important part she played in taking, she's a closer, I've said that before. She had all this groundwork made for her, but she still had to take that ball and cross that finish line. And she got it there. If it weren't for all the work that she did, and she rallied the women here, it's just incredible to me to think that in Miami County, we started in 1914 with 16 members. And by 1917, there were seven branches of the sea. One in Peoria, one in Bunker Hill, one in Converse, one in Mexico, one in Macy. It's almost been, did I say Peoria? It's just incredible to see that there were so many people, you know? And she rallied them, she got them there, and then she became state league president. And then she went to Washington, and then she went prepared, she organized the Pan-American Conference of Women. So she ended up on the international, you know, land, I mean, it's landscape, it's just, and then she's here, he's from here. To portray her as a 12-year-old with a bicycle, which represents the women's movement because it is a symbol of freedom, to represent her as a 12-year-old, we hope to inspire all the young women, not just the young women, but anybody that needs to have a place to be inspired. And, you know, we're talking, what a better place in the library to be inspired. What was it that you said, Carnegie said? I can't remember.
I can't remember. I can't remember.
Inspiration for the brain, food for the brain.
Food for the brain.
Inspiration for the brain. You just, I just, I can't tell you how grateful I feel tonight because it has been a rollercoaster. Never in my wildest dream did I think that we would end up with a no vote. And it was a blow. But I really appreciate that you saw the importance of this woman and the good that can come from this. The civic center is a key piece of the things she did. She was there 75 years ago to create that civic center. She's the one that decorated that civic center. We can do something with her. It's going to be part of the suffrage trail. I don't know if you realize that. We are going to put a marker there because she put her mark there. There's going to be a marker at the Episcopal Church as well. So there's, and we hope to stretch it into the county so that we can find where the women met in the different places and expand. What better way to bring tourism here in Peru and have people realize outside of Peru that we're a pretty good place to be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Regine.
May I say one other thing? You know, it occurred to me the other day that we have wonderful scholarships in the name of Cole Porter. And it seems to me, we as a community could have a scholarship in the name of this woman. And that might be something that we and the county could think about, establishing a scholarship of someone in school because we do it for Cole Porter. And she certainly deserves just as much as he does.
Brenda, what time was the lieutenant governor going to be at the library?
Thursday, 3 o'clock, right?
11:30.
3 o'clock.
It's 11:30, Jean, did you get?
Oh, is it?
I thought it was 2:30. I thought it was 2:30.
There you go.
Good question.
You'll get back to us.
Yeah, it says, this is from Steve Dobbs. The check will be presented by the lieutenant governor on September 17th, 2020, at 2:30 on the steps of the Peru Public Library. Has it been an update since then?
I haven't seen that update. Okay. I don't want to be late after the word.
Vincent, you have been involved in this as well?
Yep.
Yes, my name is Vincent Edmonds, and my partner, Austin, and I started a business here called ACES Plus. And we have just been honored to meet these ladies and to work with them in both writing and receiving the grant. And I just applaud you all so much for making this happen. The one word that I would say is tourism. And so the first conversation that you were having about your budget, tourism helps a lot of cities to lift themselves up. And Marie Stuart Edwards is still lifting Peru up. And so we are just elated that you made this decision. Thank you very much.
We couldn't have done it without them, by the way. They've moved a lot of, a lot of mountains.
Okay, seeing nothing else, do we have any communications?
Are we not talking about the budget, or?
It'll be put on the agenda. First reading will be next month.
Okay.
And that's the appropriate time, though.
Okay.
But that's when it's actually on the agenda, so I, you guys.
Do we have any comments from the board, too?
I just have a quick one, Tom. I got a phone call from the courthouse, from Mary Kay down at the voter's registration office, and a lady that was in her 80s came in and registered to vote for the very first time in her life. So whether it had anything to do with this, I don't have any idea, but...
Yes.
I'm very concerned about the public, this public safety not being seemingly as big a priority, is that with the fire department only getting a 2% raise, this concerns me a lot. And the time that, I just...
I will go into that. The police department cut one position to get the money they are getting.
Right.
The fire department, we're in the process of trying to get them a new station number two. Also, with the fire department, I told them if they wanted more money, we could cut one of theirs. And they didn't want to do that. It's not a pleasant thing, what we did. I told them they weren't being forgotten. We're in a personal pandemic right now, or whatever you want to call it, with the police department. The police department are eight short. We're having trouble filling their vacancies. Not only that, when you hire a fireman, they're in constant training, and I understand that. However, when you take a new fireman... However, when you take a new fireman and they go out on a run, then that fireman that's on that truck is pulling hoses, he's helping the other firemen, he may even be in the building with them and not outside. He counts for something right there. When you take a policeman before they can ever be in a squad car, they have two weeks of classroom training. Then they have numerous training in with an FTO. Normally, it's what, Dan, 30, 30 days on each day, each shift?
It's 90 days in training.
And then they have 16 weeks away from home before they'd never be out in a car by themselves. Once they finish their 16 weeks training, they come back, there's another month, or maybe two, depending on the individual, before they ever account for anything. Right now, it's hard to get. What we're trying to do is get them to come over from other departments. Unfortunately, we can't compete with Kokomo. We can't even compete with Wabash. Logan Sporth is comparable to us on wages, but the only thing is, you know, the other cities that I mentioned, including Wabash, including Logan Sporth, including Rochester. Rochester, a small community as it is, their police department starts out 11,000 more than our police department. But if you take and look at the overall picture, they have more of the retail up there, they have more industry. You know, everywhere around us has more on retail. Retail doesn't sound like a whole lot, but when you take it into consideration, just like our grocery stores, we have Aldi's, we have Save-A-Lot, and we have Kroger's. Then you go over to Logan Sporth, they have their, I forget the name of it now, a big grocery chain over there.
Martin's.
Plus Walmart, right. Martin's plus Walmart, plus Aldi's, plus, you know, they're growing leaps and bounds. And what we gotta do is get industry in here. And it's like I told the fire department, I'm not forgetting them. But right now, the way we have to work through it is to try and get our police officers back up at least within three, so that, they're talking about going to 12-hour shifts. You know, if the firemen want to go to eight-hour shifts, I'm sure we can cut money that way because then they're gonna be working an eight-hour shift like anybody else. And that is something I've been thinking about and putting on paper.
Well, you know, I'm glad that you brought up the policemen being away from home. For firemen, they're away from home 2,900 hours a year, away from their families, as compared to you and I, who have a regular schedule, or a 40-hour-a-week schedule, is 2,040 hours. And we're thinking about, you know, look at these guys, I look at Patrick, and I look at Chief Hawke, and, you know, looking in their eyes, and I just know, you know, like that little kid's at home. Not you, Chief Hawke, unless things have changed. But, you know, and to think that, I'm done, please. Think that we're, you know, only gonna honor them with a 2% raise. The police department as a whole is separate. All I'm asking is that we seriously look at how we can help them. That's where Baker Tilly can really come into play, because to give them a 2% raise when they're spending that many hours away from home, I'm gonna disagree with. And you and I have talked about that.
And that's fine. I mean, you know, I'm not saying that they don't deserve the money.
Right.
What I am saying is, I'm having a hard time finding it at this particular time, because you don't know, even with Baker, what Baker Tilly told you, that's on the upside scale of it. Until we see how it's going next year, we may be laying off people by the end of next year.
And this will be the last thing I say, I promise, Tom. You know, right now, we're in the best economic development, is the city and Peru that we've had in so long. And that's because we've stood on, we're standing on the shoulders of men and women who have come before. Now it's all coming, some of it's coming to fruition.
This is not something that happened overnight. This has happened over the last... But it's not something, it didn't happen overnight, and we can't fix it overnight.
I agree. I just think if we can, I would be happy to do whatever I could, can, to work with Baker Tilly, work with you, Susan, and try and find, you know, to increase this somehow.
I think that's what we're all gonna be doing this next month.
Good point, Tom. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.